It says live is preparing okay so I think I have to still press one button on live. This is Ajay Shah, the executive vice president for awareness and advocacy for Vishyendu Prashant of America or VHPA, holding the council of America and with me is Utsav Chakrabarti. Namaste Utsavda, how are you?
Namaste Ajay Bhai and finally hopefully this time we will succeed. This is our third attempt today since time to go for go for our live broadcast and you know one is fully packed so I guess we will be having a good time.
We will be having a good time you know there's a Murphy's law it says that if anything can go wrong it will and today a lot of things went wrong but we are here we are you know we are we are rocking and rolling and we have some really important issues to cover but before we go to the issues let me tell remind our viewers and our listeners that we are live every week at 11 o'clock on Facebook and sometimes when the technical difficulties come we are later at like but we are always here on Sunday and if you don't catch us live you can always go back and look at our recording and we are also going to have this on a podcast as a podcast is going to be available very soon so we are already on YouTube our YouTube address is youtube.com/ VHPA videos and you can see the recorded version there as soon as this show is over we go and upload it to YouTube and you can watch us on YouTube it persists over there forever and I know that everyone is holding their breath itself as to who is going to be designated the Hindu hater of the week and I know you have a really good pick for this week that indicates how in from every you know how narrow minded people can get and you know without understanding the deeper meaning of things so I think you know I think we have an interesting show today and but as we always do let's let's start our show with a brief prayer and we will not do it like last time when we did this we did not we did not have the audio working right so there's always something that doesn't work but this time let's hope that we have everything working and we are able to we are able to you know share this little prayer which will last only 30 seconds but we are going to be going to start with this little prayer okay so here we go. May all beings all over the world be happy and peaceful. So that this prayer is you know universal Hindu prayer it says that may everyone all the beings in this world have find happiness we Sukhi Sukhi is lot more than happiness find inner peace fire and find happiness and we are not saying one group of people or the other group of people or anyone we say and not even just saying human beings right we are saying that let everyone in the entire universe all living beings find inner peace inner happiness and prosper and thrive.
Yeah Ajay Bhai that's a very very profound message and it gets repeated again and again in our dharmic scriptures not just humans but all living beings find happiness and satisfaction so yeah that was a very very good prayer and thank you for sharing that.
So that signal is kind of interesting that while Hindus always seek for everyone's happiness all living beings be happy we don't say that you will be happy if you come to Hindu dharma we don't say that if you you'll be happy if you say a particular prayer or if you worship in a particular place or if you follow a particular book we don't do that but on the other hand this week in Pakistan a 13 year old Hindu girl was abducted and converted right and this happens all the time and not only that in you know we have noticed that you know on a couple of months ago a month and a half ago in March in Afghanistan there was a bombing in a Sikh gurudwara and this bombing led to the death of 25 worshippers in the gurudwara and this you know and all because the people who live in some of these countries don't adhere to particular religious tradition or don't worship in a particular way or don't follow a particular book right?
Well I'm gonna put it much more plainly Ajay Bhai so the the attack at the gurudwara in Kabul was not the first one there have been repeated attacks being done against the minority Sikhs and Hindus of Afghanistan and the attacks are usually done by Islamic groups some of whom adhere to the Taliban political ideology some of whom adhere to the Islamic state or ISIS you know we are all familiar with that name ideology all of whom are usually supported logistically and ideologically and economically from Pakistan so this is this has been going on for a while in fact since the 1980s late 80s and early 90s more than 80,000 Sikh families and Hindu families from Afghanistan had been forced to migrate to India and they live in Delhi most of them in Delhi some in other parts of northern India and that was because in the 90s the the first radical Islamic groups the Mujahideen came to power in Afghanistan and then the Taliban came to power in Afghanistan both of whom were adhering to a much more devout and a more fundamental form of Islam which in turn relegates Hindus and Sikhs to a very bad citizenry they they put them in a very bad position.
So Utsavda but you know this week something happened that you know brings kind of faith in goodness in people right because the vice president former vice president and now the democratic you know presumed democratic nominee for presidency Joe Biden came out and supported Afghan Hindus and Sikh and I'm going to read you the quote from former vice president and get your reaction to it so he said on 14th of May there's just a couple of days ago he said with the recent uptick in violence in Afghanistan including a horrifying attack this week on hospital military ward I want to express my concern about the situation facing Sikhs and Hindus in Afghanistan including the terrorist attack on Sikhs at the gurudwara Harrai Sahib in Kabul in March Sikhs and Hindus are not outsiders living in Afghanistan they are Afghan and a vital part of the country's heritage Afghanistan heritage right and then it continues and says the intense persecution these communities have faced in recent decades is an unspeakable tragedy he goes on to say that I vividly recall when in the mid 1990s the Taliban sought to make Sikhs and Hindus wear yellow to identify them as non Muslims the recent attack against Afghan Sikh community demonstrates once again the dangerous conditions for religious minorities and then he makes a proposal Vice President Biden makes a proposal and he says I stand with the Sikh and Hindu communities in Afghanistan seeking safety for their family and the freedom to practice their faith and urge the department of state to consider their request for emergency refugee protection but so that any your we'll go into much more detail but what is your you know when you when you hear this what is your what is the first thing that goes through your mind?
Well Ajay Bhai the first thing that goes through my mind with this statement from the former vice president now the presidential presumptive presidential nominee for the Democrats Joe Biden the first thing that comes to my mind is that he gets it he gets what is going on there he understands the threat to the Hindu and the Sikh minority communities in Afghanistan I hope logically he understands the same threats are pretty much there in Pakistan as well for a much larger community about five to six million of them so I think he gets it I think he also kind of validates in some ways what the government of India did a couple of months ago with the with the promulgation of citizenship amendment act or the CAA which pretty much also gives this this validation to the situation of Hindus and Sikhs in Afghanistan Pakistan and some other countries theocratic countries in the region which have Islamic laws and have official level of discrimination against their non Islamic minorities so I think it's a good good understanding on the part of the vice president.
Yeah and before we go to CAA right let me so let me you know highlight something else and that is the congressman you know Rohan Kanna who is a congressman a democratic congressman from Silicon Valley in California and is is not that great a fan of Hindus I mean he is a Hindu name obviously but he you know he went and joined the Pakistani caucus knowing fully well the kind of atrocities Pakistan is committing against it's you know all over all over the region Indian subcontinent and and the situation in Afghanistan for example is so bad and in Pakistan that even Rohan Kanna a member of Pakistani caucus came out and said the following and I'm going to read his words okay he said because the rampant religions religious violence against Afghan Sikhs and Hindus poses an existential threat for them I urge the US embassy in Kabul to refer Sikh and Hindus still in Afghanistan for emergency refugee protection under the US RAP and for the department of state and the department of homeland security to accept this referral without objection to ensure their safety then he said there are deeply troubling reports of ties between the Pakistan's ISI intelligence services inter services intelligence and the terrorist organizations that carry out the 2018 and 2020 attacks which warrant thorough investigation as US forces complete the departure from Afghanistan I am worried about the health and safety of Sikhs Hindus and other religious minorities under the threat of religious persecution and genocidal violence in Afghanistan I I want to say this because this particular show is about one specific topic and I want to introduce that topic to our viewers and then get Utsavda's comments on what Rohan Kanna said and some of the other things there is now a movement in America to go to very very small cities and go to the city councils in the cities and seek a vote which is anti-India and anti-Hindu there's a movement where the small radical groups go to the city council and say that in India Hindus are persecuting the minorities by having a constitutional amendment act that grants a prioritized a prioritized refugee status to the religious minorities from that region from the Indian subcontinent who are fleeing the murder and the forced conversion and all the other atrocities now these city councils are passing amendments or passing legislations or acts to say that India should not give these people refuge in a prioritized way so it obviously there seems to be some kind of a schism between what Vice President Biden is saying and what Congressman Kanna is saying and these city councils which are saying that India should retract the prioritized asylum request from from these persecuted religious minorities the first example of that was Seattle a city council the second was in Cambridge Massachusetts and now the third one which is coming up for vote this week on Wednesday this week on Wednesday is Saint Paul in Minnesota okay the Hindus over there are banded together and we'll talk about what they are doing and all of that a little bit later in the show but I want everyone to understand that the people in some of these places are so radicalized Utsavda that even when Vice President Biden and Rohan are saying that these persecuted religious minorities the Hindus the Sikhs the Christians the Jains the Buddhists who are being persecuted in these countries in Indian subcontinents like Pakistan and Afghanistan they are saying that US should give them prioritized prioritized asylum but at the same time they turn around and say that if India gives them a prioritized asylum it is somehow against the principle of so-called secularism how do you reconcile it Utsavda?
So I would I would have to say that there are three points that need to be brought forth for our audience to understand what is going on and then see the hypocrisy in this entire effort the first point is that some of these city councils that you brought up the Seattle the Saint Paul Minnesota Cambridge Massachusetts these three city councils are very strongly Democrat leaning city councils they have a strong presence and support from the Democratic Party Vice President she Vice President Joe Biden is also the presidential candidate for the Democratic Party so therein you see the the difference in their opinion and and some level of hypocrisy in how they are approaching the issue Rohan Kanna himself and Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal both have been very strongly critical of India for giving asylum and refugee status to the persecuted Sikhs and Hindus from Pakistan and Afghanistan at the same time they are asking the US government the Trump administration to give them emergency refugee status in America and rightfully citing the right reasons for it so there itself you see the hypocrisy and the politics that is coming out of some of these politicians the second point I want to make is that these city councils also have a strong lobbying influence of certain Islamic groups which are very radical in the global context but have managed to creep their way into the political discourse of America and that is why they are gaining influence in the small city council in those in these localized governing bodies they have tried to gain similar influence in Washington DC at the national level but they don't seem to be succeeding because people in Washington DC and people in in larger governing bodies have a bigger perspective and they understand the geopolitics of the world far better and some of them realize that these are radical Islamic groups who do not have a good track record around the world but in these smaller areas where they can creep in with their small pockets of population they do gain support and that is what you see in places like Saint Paul Minnesota and Seattle and in Massachusetts the third point I want to make is that they are not bringing these kinds of resolutions against India India and Hindus to just you know oppose for the sake of opposition they are genuinely targeting the Hindu American population that is born and brought up in America and they are genuinely targeting them and trying to break them away from the larger Hindu community by specifically scanning attacking the Hindu community at its global level so there is a three-pronged strategy that these kinds of guys are applying and it is very hypocritical on the part of some of these Democratic Party leaders who are on one hand supporting that the asylum for refugees from the Hindu and Sikh community from Pakistan and Afghanistan and America on the same time criticizing India for giving many many more Hindus and Sikhs from these countries refugee status.
So the interesting part is that the same week in the last you know since the legislation have been proposed in Saint Paul in last two three weeks USCIRF which is a body you know independent commission that is set up by the US Congress is US United States Commission for International Religious Freedom which you know we talked about previously which brings out all these reports about international freedom in various countries and all that and we will in fact you know India has been in the crosshairs for a long time Hindus have been in the in their crosses for a long time they came out and said they citizenship amendment citizenship amendment act in India potentially exposes millions of Muslims to detention deportation and statelessness when the government completes its plan nationwide registry register of citizens and I want you to take a look at the look at the look at what the citizenship amendment act in India says the citizenship amendment act which was passed on 11th of December 2019 is actually an amendment to the Indian citizenship of citizenship act of 1955 and it provides a path to Indian citizenship for illegal migrants illegal migrants who are basically refugees because Indian constitution does not have the word refugees in them so it says that if you come in illegally to India as a refugee and if you're a Hindu Sikh Buddhist Jain Parsi or Christian a minority in these Indian subcontinent countries Afghanistan and Pakistan primarily and and you fled the persecution from Pakistan and Bangladesh Afghanistan before December 2014 then you would be eligible for a priority asylum it does not take away citizenship from anyone it does not say that if you are a you know if you have if you are applying by you know any other means if you're legally applying for citizenship in America there's a religion test any of that it just says that if you are a persecuted minority in one of these other countries then you get you know you get prioritized asylum in India which is actually you know not that different from you know from what the Seattle City Council has done right so if you if you go back and see what the Seattle City Council did in I think it was last year in December so Seattle City Council last year in December passed a resolution that you know that declared essentially CR I'm sorry CR Saint Paul Seattle and Saint Paul are very similar history so sometimes it gets a little you know you know tongue twisting but the Saint Paul City Council in 2019 passed a resolution it's called resolution 192199 which said that they would support the expansion of access to citizenship to lawful permanent citizenship which is to the DACA asylum seekers and other form of immigrants opposing the US citizenship and immigration propose fee increases so essentially what they did Utsavda is they said that they this Saint Paul would become a sanctuary city they said that the asylum seekers should be given legal and legal and human rights to seek asylum and the domestic and international laws would support this particular act of granting asylum because it is consistent with the American values and compassion the principles on which America was built on right?
Correct so and I mean you just highlighted the hypocrisy in these in these resolutions and and postures and it's basically that what basically says is that we are open-minded we are going to give support to the persecuted minorities on a case by case basis clearly defining the criteria for bringing them in but if India does that and does that for a much larger section of the same persecuted minority India is somehow fascist and anti Muslim so so that is that is the level of hypocrisy that many of these people are working on working you know they're 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 hypocritical and the effort from our side should be just to highlight that part and I think most logical rational people with an open mind will be able to understand what's going on and I as I said it is it is not organic in nature it is part of a consent concerted effort by some radical Islamic groups groups who have presence in these cities and who have been able to influence their local administrative bodies and their local elected officials to toe the line that they are promoting in terms of propaganda so it is it is that simple and you know we need to look no further than these three examples Seattle Cambridge Massachusetts and Saint Paul to see where the problem lies.
But Utsavda do politicians think that the citizens living in Saint Paul are so stupid that they cannot put these two legislation the CAA and and their own resolution that is coming up for vote on Wednesday they cannot the citizens of Saint Paul cannot put these two documents side by side and see one-to-one correspondence between the two and say that look I mean this sudden amount of hypocrisy here how can I mean these are supposedly all the city council members are very smart they're astute politicians right how can they think that their citizens are so dumb?
Well trust me Ajay Bhai I think many of these politicians I would put the word astute in air quotes do believe that they can get away with this because in these times when many of these cities are facing a medical emergency are facing the COVID crisis with with significant casualties in terms of people who are losing their lives and the people who are providing emergency services so when they should be focusing on these things they are instead focusing on on this very hypocritical narrative and pushing a bill through but in some level these efforts also show that when special interest groups operate at whatever level you know whether it is at the level of Washington DC or whether it is at the level of city council with the right amount of money and ideological input they can get away with such you know hypocritical and detrimental efforts from their local politicians and I must add that when the Seattle City Council passed their resolution within a month of that the city of Seattle faced the first major brunt of COVID crisis and for almost a month those same people who who passed those resolutions were clueless about how to handle the COVID crisis in Seattle I mean with later interventions from the national level and at the state level they were managed able to contain it but that goes to show that you know the the Seattle City Council which was busy you know passing these hypocritical special interest group led resolution. Passing these hypocritical special interest group-led resolutions. They could have focused on working on their healthcare issues and making sure that less people died of COVID. But that is something that we need to share with our audience. That is something that people in our community should share with the people of Seattle and with share with the people of Saint Paul, Minnesota with, you know. It's about awareness, it's about sharing of ideas and, and sharing our understanding of how realities are being presented. And some of them are plain lies that are being presented.
And, and I, you know, I, they have, I mean, I, it's really fascinating that a city council of a tiny city. You know, like Cambridge, Massachusetts, for example. Thinks that they, you know, without understanding the issue and they, you know, that they can pass a resolution. And, you know, they will make a massive multifaceted democracy like India. Change its course and stop giving protection and asylum to people who are fleeing for their lives and fleeing for their honor. Right? From all over the, of all over subcontinent. And the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, instead of focusing on local issues, lecturing India about secularism, which India has lived secular, you know. A true secular, you know, existence based on Vasudhava Kuttumakam, which is much broader than secularism. It is real acceptance, real acceptance of all traditions, of all. You know, of all human beings in whatever, you know, form they come. And a tiny city of Cambridge, Massachusetts or a city like Saint Paul has the, you know. Has the audacity to lecture a, a true Vasudhava Kuttumakam believing. Tradition, country based on the Hindu ethos for all these thousands of years. And tell, tell, tell Hindus and tell India that they are not secular or they are not respecting other, other religions or any of that. When we have actually lived it for ten thousand years. And that kind of pontification coming from. The, the people in Congress who have Hindu sounding name, such as Emi Bera or Pramila Jayapal. Who have not said a single word about the attack on the Guru Dwar or daily conversions and murders in Pakistan. And, and people in Saint Paul are, are being misled by. You know, people who are the proponents of this ordinance saying that, hey, look, here is Congressman Emi Bera. Hey, look, here is Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal. These are Hindus and they are against the CAA. So CAA must be really, really against all the other, all the other religions. It's not in letters in CAA, it's not in, it's not in the spirit and still the lies continue, right?
That's correct, that's correct. But, you know, it points to a larger issue that I see in American politics. And I must say, I see more of that on the Democratic Party side of, of politics. Because, you know, if you look at the recent page that was, that was published, the webpage that was published by presidential candidate Joe Biden. He had a whole page dedicated to the Jewish-American community. About what he has done in the past and how he's going to work with the community. He has a whole page dedicated to the Muslim-American communities. In which he actually brought up very controversial issues from around the world, including, you know, many of the hate. That comes out against Hindus from the Muslim community, the radicals in that community. But he doesn't have a single webpage for the Hindu-American community. So that is something, you know, I was really concerned about. And I'm mentioning this issue because this is a reflection of, this is, this is the, is a scaled up version of the hypocrisy that we were discussing. In, in the city councils and how, you know, there is a double standard when it comes to the Hindu community and the Hindu-American community. And I, it would be prudent to have a discussion with, you know, any Democrat leadership, you know, Joe Biden surrogates. You know, why did the Biden campaign not have a dedicated policy posture towards Hindu-Americans? There are four million Hindu-Americans.
Oh, six actually, six million.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, I saw somewhere that four, four million of them are actually voting Hindu-Americans.
Yeah.
And I mean, if they can have a policy posture for the two other major religious minority communities in America, that is the Jewish-American and the, and the Muslim-American communities. What have the four million Hindu-Americans done wrong? That they don't deserve a single webpage that, you know, explains the policy postures of the Democratic Party. Towards the Hindu-American community and that is something that every Hindu-American should talk to their democratic leadership about. I mean, that's what Rohan should be talking about, that's what, you know. All these surrogates, you know, I mean, Jani needs to be talking about. And I don't know why that's not being discussed. This is, this is a reason why we face this kind of discrimination in city councils and, and other places.
I, I, I agree with you, Sodha. I think. Did, you know, this is even more important for Democrats than they think. Because one of the Pew surveys that was done recently, I think about a year ago, actually said that. Over fifty percent of Hindu-Americans are registered Democrats. And, you know, I think Democrats should do into some introspection and say, do they want to lose? The Hindu-American vote, the American Hindu vote. Because, you know, and this is really the, you know, this, this is the democratic vote to lose. You, you can do, you can do a survey of the Hindu community. And you'll find that, you know, there are apprehensions in the community about whether, how much, you know, support they should lend to the Democratic Party. Because of the resolutions like the one in Saint Paul.
Correct, correct. And I mean, you know, if you leave every other geopolitical issue aside. Just the fact that despite being four million in number in America, the Democratic Party did not deem it fit. To have a policy posture on their webpage towards the Hindu-American community. While they are doing that for the Jewish-American community and the Muslim-American communities, who are very similar in number, maybe more, slightly more than the Hindu-Americans. That itself, in itself, leave aside everything else, leave aside the geopolitics of the Indian subcontinent, leave aside everything. These are four million Indian Hindu-American voters in America. There needs to be somebody out in the Democratic Party who should be bringing this up. I don't know who they should be, but.
I, I, I'll tell you, Sodha, I'll tell you what, you know, even if, even if they don't put it, you know, let's say that. Let's assume that Joe Biden, former Vice President Biden does not put this on his webpage, right? But at least if he can use his bully pulpit to stop the anti-Hindu resolutions. In the democratic-controlled city councils. That would go a long way for Democrats to, you know, assure the Hindu community that they are not actively seeking. To harm the Hindu community and I'll tell you why, because I, I really truly believe with Sodha. That what Saint Paul City Council is doing. Is victimizing or proposing the victimization of the victims. Okay, this resolution that they have, which is coming up for vote on Wednesday, City Council Resolution twenty-seven one-two or twenty-seven seven-twelve. Is an attempt, I really think, to victimize the victims of religious persecution, okay? And I actually believe, and I really do believe, that the real reason. The real purpose of this resolution is to create hatred, like really create hatred. Against Hindus and people of Indian origin who reside in Minneapolis, Saint Paul area. Okay, that's all they're trying to do, they're trying to create hatred for people who follow Hindu Dharma. Hatred for people who are of Indian origin. And what is that going to end up in? What is that going to result in? Why do you think that this is going to impact the Democratic Party? Because this hatred is going to lead to the bullying of people who are following Hindu practices. It is going to lead to bullying of the kids in schools and colleges. Okay, it is going to encourage the hate crime against the people who are hardworking. Who work in more visible public places, whether it's seven-eleven or the motels. Or, you know, you know, some other, you know, small restaurants. Or they're, you know, they're, you know, they're working in, at the gas stations. So these are the people in, in Minneapolis, in, in Saint Paul area. Who are going to take the repercussion, who are going to face the repercussions of these kinds of hate-filled. India-phobic, Hindu-phobic council, city council resolution. I understand that the politicians in Saint Paul want to go for a short-term political gain. I understand that they are, you know, they have been, they have been misled by special interest group. I understand that maybe this is something that fits their ideology. But shouldn't they worry about what happens to the lives and safeties of the children? And, and people who are of Hindu faith and who are of Indian origin. And who are going to now be with impunity, going to be attacked where they are. To me, if they cannot, if they cannot see this, then how does the Democratic Party and the vice, former vice president? In good faith, with a straight face, go to these people, the same people who are being victimized and say, we need your vote for the presidential election?
Yes, I, you, you explained it and I think, I think the, the crux of the entire conversation that we are having today. It can be summed up in just two sentences, you know, resolutions like the Seattle, Minne, Saint Paul, Minnesota and all these resolutions are basically. Resolutions pushed forward by special interest Islamic groups, targeting the victims of atrocities. And portraying them as perpetrators. So victimizing the victims is basically what is the takeaway from this entire conversation.
And I, you know, I was going to bring this up a little earlier, but. So why do some of these academics who are, you know, who are of Indian origin? Who have a Hindu sounding name? Why are these academics supporting these India-phobic, Hindu-phobic resolution? For example, there's, there are academics in Saint Paul area, right? Who are supporting this. Now, I understand they may have an ideology that is, you know, ideology that is against Hindus, ideology that doesn't agree with some Indian, some part of Indian politics and all that. But don't they see that they are putting an entire community at a risk of hate crime?
Well, I mean, if you are, if you have, you have to look back into the history of these, these academics. I mean, one of the academics, I will name him, Ajay Skaria. He, he has been the one supporting the Saint Paul City Council Resolution against Hindus. And you want, as you wondered, he has a Hindu sounding name, why is he doing this? You just need to look back at his own background and where he's coming from. He comes from an ideological position, extremely ultra-leftist. Which is very antithetical to Hindu religious practices and Hindu political practices. In the Indian subcontinent in India. So he brings that animosity from India to America. And he portrays his biases in America towards the Hindu community. Based on those animosities that he brought from India, from his own political and ideological background. And if you look at his background over the past eighteen years, his record, he has been consistently doing that. He opposes everything that, that is coming out in support of the Hindu community from the Indian subcontinents. He has been public about it and he's very honest about it. So this is not something new coming out from him. There are hundreds of academicians in America who have Hindu sounding names who are, who do that. They do that because of the funding and the patronage that they get in their circles from special interest groups. And they do that because they ideologically follow a particular political trend that they carry from, from the Indian subcontinent to America. So it is, it is very well-known and there is not much you can do to change them. Because they are invested in it ideologically and they get money for it. So how are you going to change them?
But even if they, if it comes at the cost of physical harm to people who are at the crosshairs of these resolutions?
I mean, Ajay Bhai, historically, I mean, there is a word in, from the twentieth century that, that portrays these kinds of people. It's called whistling. You know, the word coined during the World War Two are, you know, people who, who were otherwise, you know. Political, academical background people who supported Adolf Hitler because it benefited them in their own little ways. And ensured their own success and position. There, there was a word for it, that's called whistling. So what makes you think there, there will be no more whistlings after the death of Adolf Hitler? So I would portray them as whistlings of our community. And I don't think they really care who gets benefit out of this and who's harmed, gets harmed by this, they are looking after themselves.
Yeah, no, so that, all I can say is that I'm, I'm truly disappointed. But at the same time, I'm also encouraged, I'm encouraged because I think. This is the first time in last, since March that I've noticed that at local levels, right? Whether it's a Seattle or Saint Paul, people are actually taking notice, the Hindus and the people of Indian origin. And Hindus from all over the world, actually, you know, there are a lot of Hindus outside of India, so we don't want to make it about India alone. But in this particular case, because it's an Indian law, but, you know, Hindus from all over the world and Indians. They're actually waking up to the fact that they are, you know, they are the victims who are, and people are trying to victimize them again. And it is happening at their local level now. And I, I was really encouraged by the fact that how the community got together in Seattle and gave it their all. And I'm seeing this with all the, you know. All the online postings on the Seattle, sorry, on the Saint Paul Minnesota's City Council website, there are twenty-eight hundred comments. A lot of Hindus have come out and commented on it. I know that Hindus, Hindu groups have been talking about how, you know, for the first time, they are trying to learn. How to get involved in the community issue, how to go to the city council, how to talk to the city, to the council members. So I am encouraged, I'm really encouraged by the fact that these actions, as narrow-minded as, as they have been. Are waking up the Hindu and the Indian community to spring into action and really take this, you know, strike this to heart. I, I want to mention specifically that if you live in the Saint Paul area. Please do go to the city council website and register your protest. It takes literally five minutes, you go to the website, you say, I want to, I want to register my protest against this. This particular resolution and you get an online form. So basically on the city council website, click on Resolution twenty-seven twelve, register, right now. You can comment up to a thousand words, a thousand characters, put in your comments and indicate whether you are for, against or neutral. In this case, you want to say that you are against the resolution and that's all you have to do. And, and you don't have to necessarily live in Saint Paul area. I've seen a lot of comments from people who are not constituents. But give your heartfelt comments on the website, there is also a change.org petition. So if you go to change, C-H-A-N-G-E dot O-R-G. And, and search for Saint Paul City Council Resolution. and, and search for St. Paul City Council Resolution, you will go there. This is a resolution, this is the petition that was started a few days ago by the residents of St. Paul to oppose this particular resolution. So, I, please, please register your protest against these kinds of resolutions that are going to put the local Hindu and Indian communities in jeopardy, that are going to, that are advocating for victims not getting asylum, that are against the sanctuary country policy that India has now instituted through amendment to its constitution to give refuge to these people on a prioritized basis. So, please do your part, please join your fellow Hindus in St. Paul and help them out. Sodha, any final words on this before we move on to the next part?
I, I would support you and request everybody to do so. And I would also put the, the links to the change.org petition as well as the letter to the Seattle City, to the St. Paul City Council on our Facebook page. So, that way people can go to it from this page below where you're already listening to this podcast. So, I would, I would think that that, that would be a positive step from our side.
Yep, so that, so now we come to the final two segments of our, of our program, which we always do. And there are two things, right? We have the Hindu Charity of the Week and at the very end, we reveal who the Hindu Hater of the Week is, right? So, first, I'm going to, I'm going to, you always do the honors of picking and designating the Hindu Hater of the Week, so I'm going to leave that to you. So, let me just, let me just highlight the Hindu Charity of the Week this time. This is something that is really, you know, really important. It's important because, as you know, with the COVID nineteen situation, the lock, has brought in lockdown everywhere and lockdowns have resulted in the closure of all the mandirs, the Hindu temples, the ashrams have been shut down. And a lot of these temples are not, most of these temples actually are not rich. They have day-to-day expenses, whether it is mortgage or rents or utilities and things like that. They employ people who are, you know, working in jobs such as, you know, landscaping or, you know, cleaning or, or actually doing worship and puja, the Hindu priests. And all of these people rely on donation that these mandirs gather when people go there to worship. And they, you know, they put money in the collection bins and this is what supports the mandirs. And, or they do special pujas in the mandir, special prayers. And when they do special prayers, they offer, you know, some money to the priests or they offer some money to the temple. And all of this, Sodha, all of this has now come to a halt. Because, come to a halt because nobody can go to the mandirs and mandirs are shut because of lockdown. And they do their programs online, they're streaming some of the pujas, but the collection of funds is not the same. And so, what we have done as, you know, World Hindu Council of America and one of our initiatives, which is Hindu Mandir, Mandir Executive Conference, H M E C, is set up a special fund to support the priests and the smaller mandirs, but primarily the priests in these mandirs. I am going to share, I'm going to share this particular screen to show you this particular, okay, I'm going to show this particular page that we have on GoFundMe for the Hindu priest charity that we have. So, this is the COVID nineteen Hindu Mandir Priests Fund. And you can see that during the COVID nineteen lockdown and crisis, the Hindu temples across North America have been closed. The H M E C and Hindu Mandir Priest Conference, which is another initiative of World Hindu Council of America, are raising funds to support the priests in these challenging times. So, just as H M E C is for, is a initiative of V H P A or World in the Council of America, Hindu Mandir Priest Conference gathers all the priests from across the country. And all you have to do is go to charity.gofundme.com and look for, and search for Hindu Priests Fund and you will see that we are far away from our goal, but we have raised seventeen hundred dollars and I really urge you to raise funds for this particular initiative. Sodha, your comments?
I think it's, it's a much-needed effort and I think, I commend Vishwa Hindu Parishad of America, World Hindu Council of America for taking this up because there are hundreds of priests, Hindu priests all across America in different temples. And because the temples are closed, as you said, they are not receiving any donations, any, any support from the community. And they have been steadfastly following the rules given by the state governments on the closure of temples. And the community should use all possible means, online means like this webpage to support them. And I really appreciate you guys for doing this.
All right, with that, Sodha, now we come to our exciting final segment. Why don't you take it from here, here's the screen and I, you do a great job every week and I just can't stop, you know, finding humor in all of these Hindu haters of the week. But I, you know, I turn it over to you because this is, you know, you present this better than anyone else.
Well, the Hindu Hater of the Week is, are actually, I should say, the hundred and five local Christian pastors, pastors from the state of Ohio who lobbied their government to ban yoga in their public schools. And the reason they did it is because they believe, and I agree, that yoga is a Hindu practice. And therefore, it is something that, that should not be taught to Christian kids. So, I can see this coming and I can, I, I mean, this is not the first time that, that churches and, and pastors and, and, you know, and different denominations in America and all around the world actually have come and considered yoga as a quote-unquote heathen practice and therefore should not be allowed in, in, in American society. So, this is not the first time, this is not going to be the last time. But for this week, those hundred and five pastors from Ohio churches get the, get the distinction of being the Hindu haters of the week.
So, Sodha, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So, you know, there are, you know, one of the Hindu practices that came out of, you know, practicing Hindu sages and seers is Ayurveda, right? So, there, there are a lot of, you know, it's just like ancient Chinese medicine, Indian, ancient Indian medicine is Ayurveda. And, you know, there's a, you know, a lot of, a lot of science, you know, for drug discovery, which people have done is to go through these ancient Chinese or Indian medicine and find out why certain plant, why certain plants were used for, as certain therapies, right? So, let's say that in, in case of Ayurveda, turmeric, for example, has, was shown to have a lot of beneficial effect. And one of the, you know, there's been quite a bit of research that shows that a turmeric can slow down the onset of Alzheimer's. Now, the basic understanding of beneficial use of turmeric originated out of Ayurveda, right? So, now you think that the same hundred pastors would go, pastors, pastors would go and say to the state officials that, let's not do research on turmeric because, or let's not use turmeric in our cooking or let's not consume turmeric in any way because turmeric has, the benefits of turmeric are described in Ayurveda. So, we will now all boycott turmeric? Is, is that where this is heading now?
Well.
You know, that's all I can think of, that what is next? I mean, don't eat the basil leaf because its beneficial effects are listed in Ayurveda and we are going to boycott basil leaf now?
Well, I, I would recommend that these, these hundred and five pastors or people who think like them may want to go ahead and declare everybody who practices yoga as a heathen who is going to burn in hellfire and a Hindu from tomorrow onwards. I don't mind that. By extending that further, they can declare anybody who has had a turmeric-based food item to be a Hindu too. I, I mean, this is what happens, Ajay Bhai, this is, this is what happens, Ajay Bhai, when there is a disconnect between rational thinking and history-centric dogmatic thought process. And I think many Hindus don't recognize that it is unique to Hinduism that science and philosophy and, and religious spiritual practices go hand in hand without getting into conflict with each other. But there are other belief systems, religions that do get into conflict and then there is always this, you know, science versus religion dichotomy that happens because the religion is not rational and history cent, you know, it's too history-centric and is not rational enough to accommodate science. And, you know, that is pretty much the history of Europe throughout the Middle Ages.
You know, Sodha, but look at it the other way around. I mean, I, you know, there are a lot of good scientific discoveries that were done by people who, you know, who followed Christianity. And we don't reject those scientific discovery because they came from people who were either priests. It's a lot of mathematics, right? A lot of mathematical discoveries, a lot of physics discoveries in fifteen hundreds, sixteen hundreds, seventeen hundreds were done by people who were actually a Christian priest and at the same time they were working on mathematics. And, you know, we don't say that, well, we will not use that particular equation because the origin of that came from a, you know, from a, from a Christian priest. So, I think, you know, it, it is, I, this is, I, I, when I read this, when you sent this to me a couple of hours ago and when I read this, I thought it was a joke. Because I, I think, you know, that's really where we are headed is, let's not use turmeric and let's not use tussle leaves. And I, to be really honest, other than a few school boards where these people have influence, maybe they'll, you know, who is it really going to benefit? I mean, you know, and for most people, this is, you know, this is ridiculous, right?
Correct, so that's why, you know, but we need to still let our audience know and let the world know that there are these people, these pastors who hate yoga and therefore, you know, they had that position against Hindus and yoga. But, you know, I would recommend, you know, before we leave our audience today, we have been going at it for a while now, I would recommend everybody to watch a Hollywood movie, it's, it's not new, it's pretty old, named Agora, A-G-O-R-A. And that movie deals with this issue of the conflict between science and religion, especially during the early times of Christianity, when Christianity was moving up as a religious ideology in Europe and in the, in the Roman Empire, when Rome was still, you know, the diverse poly, polymorphic religious traditions they used to follow from Greco-Roman period. So, I would urge everybody to watch that movie, Agora, and it's a very well-made movie and it deals with a lot of these issues that we discussed today at the end of our, our program.
All right, Sodha, that's a wrap. I think we had a great discussion today and we, I want to thank everyone who is going, who was, you know, who joined us live and all the people who are going to watch this as a recorded show on Facebook. As I said again, we are also on YouTube now. And I also want to just, as a parting thought, I want to say, please, support people in St. Paul as they fight Hindu phobia and India phobia. With that, along with my co-host, Utsar Chakravarti, this is Ajay Shah on Hindu Lounge, episode number five of the live program of World Hindu Council of America, V H P A. Namaste, Utsada.
Namaste, everybody and namaste, Ajay Bhai, thank you very much.
Thank you.